Is there any one on color of participation she's ever been able to sign? Nobody? Okay, we'll skip right. We're going to the new business, which is just a discussion regarding Monticello Airport, where we are, what do we see as options, what do we want to do in the future? Ultimately, the city council is responsible for that airport. It's the city of Monticello's airport. We're the only people that can vote on anything about the airport. So this evening, many interested parties that I've spent some time with over the last couple of years are here. I think that probably the best thing to do is to ask Brad Hamilton to come up to the table and kind of be the person that gives the presentation. I guess his presentation started is where we probably should start. Brad Hamilton is an airport development consultant with Crawford Mercury and Tiley Incorporated, CMT headquartered in Springfield, Illinois. Brad has over 25 years of experience in the airport industry in both the planning and development of new airports and expansion and redevelopment of existing airports. Brad has been involved in various roles in our Monticello project for many years, so he has familiarity with many of the issues being considered by the city and is here tonight to assist the council in determining the path forward. I don't know, I think I've mentioned it to the council before, the lease that we currently have in place expires on the end of February in 2019. So we have nothing to go with up to that point, so that's what we're trying to decide what we're going to do with that. Is that fair? Okay. Brad, you want to proceed?
Yes, and thank you for having me. I've been asked to just give some remarks, a little bit of history about my involvement and what I know about the airport projects. Actually, CMT, I was first asked to engage on this project back, I think, the mayor at the time. My understanding, when I was brought in, the airport had been through an inspection by the Illinois Department of Transportation, Division of Aeronautics, and had been, there had been certain non-standard elements of the existing airports that needed to be addressed. And so I think there had been action at that point, prior to my involvement, to really try to address that, either through getting additional lease area from the property owner and then trying to solve it that way, or what ultimately ended up happening was the city decided with the support of the Division of Aeronautics to move forward with trying to find a replacement airport. And so that's where CMT first became engaged in the project. At that point, we were first involved with what was called an airport feasibility study, and there's a very prescribed process that you need to go through if you're following and going to receive federal and state funds. And that was really the intent for the group at that time in the city, was that the airport development proposal, whatever it would be, would be contingent upon the receipt of these federal and state aviation funds to help subsidize it. And at that point in time, it's quite substantial, 95% of the development funds would be funded through the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration, and then 2.5% by the state and 2.5% by the local sponsor. And that was the general rule of thumb, there were some details on individual pieces of funding that were prescribed for each of the steps in the process. So CMT was involved in doing a feasibility study, which we led in concert with the city of Monticello, and I believe at that point, the city share was actually paid through in-kind services. There was a, I think, a $12,000 or $15,000 grant that was written by the state of Illinois to pay for half of the study, and then the other half was provided by city labor. And the intent of that feasibility study was to identify demand that met the thresholds for federal money to be invested in a replacement airport. And so we went through the study that determined that the current airport had a couple of violations that did not meet minimum state standards, let alone federal standards. And so if it was determined that those could not be remedied, which that decision already had made, that we looked at the activity levels, which was 20-based aircraft, and I think there were like six or seven, maybe even 8,000 takeoffs and landings a year. This is all undertaken from memory, so don't quote me on these. But what we found was that it did meet the minimum threshold for there to be federal funds invested in a replacement facility. And a couple of the things to note at that time, and I don't know if these are still true, but they were true at that time. Number one was the University of Illinois Flight School provided the subsidy to help operate the airport because they used the airport as an alternate operating facility, planning facility for their students. Also, the Line Night Lighter Club was there that offered a significant activity level associated with their operations. And various other activities that were involved, quite a few based aircraft there as well. So for a turf facility, one of the things that was identified, and just being in the industry, kind of commentary on my part, was that it was observed to be a well-taken-care facility, and what you'd like to see many times is that a lot of the in-kind labor that was provided, I think through Sage Air, to really operate, maintain that airport, you don't see very often. And so it was grassroots effort, at that point, and I believe it still is, to maintain a pretty nice turf runway. So we went through the feasibility study, also there were requirements that it had to be a certain distance from another public use airport that had received federal funds, and we determined that it did in fact meet those criteria. And so the conclusion of the feasibility study really indicated that it was eligible to be included in the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, and the acronym is NPIUS. And at that point, the city made application to be included in the NPIUS, and ultimately they were approved by the FAA for that action. And that was a key milestone to then become, one milestone to become eligible for airport development funds through the FAA. So the next step in the process was then to do a site selection study. And the site selection study, as it's indicated, was to take a lot of the information from the feasibility study, which defined some of the needs for a runway, and actually two runways were identified as being justified according to FAA criteria, based upon crosswind conditions and operational factors. But from that, we basically were engaged in a second study that looked at various locations within proximity to the city of Monticello, being the sponsor, and that really sought to meet all the criteria that we had defined in terms of access, in terms of topography, you know, trying to really find as few landowners that would need to be impacted through the ultimate acquisition and development of a replacement airport. That study really got to a draft form and was brought in a public forum here at the council chambers, and ultimately there was significant resistance to the proposed location was out across Interstate 74, and I believe that proposed a 5,000-foot paved runway and a 4,000-foot crosswind runway, which again, I don't think the city was proposing that necessarily to build all that, but from planning standards, that was not atypical for a new airport to have that kind of plan done to. If you're going to make a federal investment in a facility, you want to make sure that it has the capability to be expanded. Because of some of the resistance and issues that were identified, the study was halted, and the study was tabled at that point. And so one of the conditions that the IDOT had said was that, hey, as long as you're moving forward with some sort of pursuit of development of a replacement airport, we're going to allow you to keep operating with some of these non-standard conditions at your existing airport. And so at that point, everything kind of just went into limbo, and I don't recall if it was a couple of years or how long it was, but there just really was no action. I don't think there was really a champion to take that forward at that point. And then I believe there was a grassroots effort to really try to reinvigorate the opportunity to be able to define and build a replacement facility with the understanding that if this wasn't accomplished, that IDOT would pull the operating, they wouldn't pull the operating certificate, basically they would reduce the airport, the existing airports are restricted landing area, which would limit some of the operations in there, and there was concern about that, it would ultimately be the demise of the airport. So this grassroots effort, during that, we were brought in really kind of ad hoc, there was no study, there were no contracts, anything else, and we really, I've been doing it out of interest just to see aviation maintained in personal interest of mine, but really we went back and redefined what would be the minimum to be able to be built to replace what was out there. And so we greatly reduced the facilities, as we said, we got rid of the crosswind runway and, you know, these were official actions, these were just really decisions by, you know, the ad hoc group to try to minimize it. And so over a period of time, there were two things going on. Number one, we were kind of involved as a group, and we were providing some very minimal technical reviews of things as they moved along, looking for potential sites that may be a single property owner, and if they would have interest in being involved, because again, land and having willing property owner was one of the primary goals of the committee. Within that, also, what was tracking along was there were continual periodic contact with IDOT. Because of this waiver that had to be issued every year, there were different representatives of the city and then ultimately this committee that would go to Springfield once a year and meet as a part of their transportation development proposals. All the airports in the state of Illinois, public use airports, are invited once a year to come to the state, meet with IDOT, present their development needs, and from there, IDOT makes decisions on what they're going to fund. So that was moving along, and again, with the intent to show interest and show progress such that the waiver would continue to be maintained for the existing airport. So that went on probably several years of really trying to keep that moving forward. Ultimately, IDOT started to really confine and press for, you know, ultimate conclusion of it, because there wasn't really any formal action that was being taken by the city to find a solution, and there weren't any hard solutions that were being brought to IDOT to say, hey, we want to fund that, we, you know, got the council on board. And so IDOT ultimately said, we're going to give you a date, and a hard date of, Mayor, which you indicated, I believe, February 19th, which coincides, I believe, with the expiration of the lease for the existing airport. And so at that point, I think everybody knew, okay, the schedule's set, if there's something that's going to be done, we now have a defined timeline. When I say we, it's you all have a timeline that, you know, a decision needs to be made. And so at that point, the committee really said, you know, this is something that really needs to be brought back to council because it's going to take official action, and it's one of those things that if no action is taken, there will be action by IDOT either way, which at the end of the expiration of lease, they'll reduce it down from a public use facility to a restricted landing area. So that's really some of the background where we've been involved and kind of the path that we've been on. It's been, I started on this in 2001, I believe, so there's, I'm sure, a lot of details that I've not given, and try to forgive me if I didn't get everything exactly correct, but I think the intent right now is really for the committee, and I'm not trying to speak on their behalf, just my perspective, is that trying to bring something back to the council to decide, you know, if there was an action that the council wants to take, because either way, there's going to be a decision made by IDOT at that time. So does anyone have a comment or a question to ask Brad at this time?
Yes.
The proposal taken up by the council was for a $3.5 million airport, and that was voted on approved to move forward with that plan. Then, before we did the site study, it was moved up to $10.5 million. Which plan are you going after, or is it a lesser dollar figure?
I don't, it's lesser. I don't know, we never actually put numbers to what would be what I would call a minimal development plan, but I know it's less than either one of those proposals had, you know.
How much money has the city spent to date on this, do you know?
I'm not the best person to ask, so don't quote me on it, but I can tell you, there was, the first study that was completed, the city had no money in that because they provided in-kind labor. The second study was for $110,000, in which the city put half into that, with the intent of that money would be reimbursed where there would be an ultimate 2.5% commitment by the city. So the way it works is that until the airport got into the federal system and all the planning was done, it was going to be paid for 50/50, and then when the development came around, the accounting would work out to where the city ultimately had the 2.5%. I think we even said anywhere from 2.5% to 5%, depending upon how some of the funding rules were moving around at that point.
Okay, so at that point, I think it was 90% for the Fed? Or was it 95%?
I believe it was 95%, it's been bouncing back and forth some.
And the state was going to be 2.5%?
Correct.
Okay. Is that still the case?
It's 90% now.
90% for the Fed? And 5% for the state, or are they still doing that?
They are, yes.
Can I interrupt for just a second? There is no plan right now. That's what this is about, is how do we not proceed? There is no, there is a plan.
Right.
That I'm aware of. So, I mean, that might be a premature, which I ask, but I understand the financial commitment has been by the city, that there really is no plan on the table, am I correct?
That is correct. And what I might explain briefly, and I have no official capacity, I'm a guest here. The airport, as he said, is sponsored, good job Brad, you know, that's good explanation. The airport is sponsored by the city, it's managed by Sage Air, officials of Sage Air, some of them are sitting here, so they could answer questions. We just had a committee because nothing was happening, so probably 15 years ago, when it got tabled, and then informal groups started getting together. Two representatives from the Farm Bureau, two chamber, two at-large, two this, two that, two county, you know, always two city people. And we got together and we first had meetings to say, does anybody care if the airport closes? And after everybody kicked it around, you know, it was decided, yeah, it's very important to, we don't know why, but to the future of the city economically. And I think, you know, maybe that's true, just my editorial comment, that we don't know what drones and everything, or what's going to happen. But through our meetings, we came up with, okay, early on, here's a good plan. And with two people from the city always present, you know, that could take it to the council anytime they wanted, but we weren't proposing, we were saying, here's a concept. And as time went on, and it didn't get adopted for whatever reasons, then another plan came about because something changed, you know, that you couldn't do the old one. So I don't know, I didn't count them, but there are probably six, eight different plans that, you know, were presented, all of them for a minimal airport. You know, going way off of the $10 million, because there wasn't any $10 million anymore. Now, what you're holding in the booklet there is through my big file, I just copied, hopefully enough to just kind of show you what the informal group has done, I guess, you know, to help the city, you know, have some idea of what they can do. Now, Brad did 99% of it because none of us had real, you know, capability in, you know, in airport design, and he had all the tools, and I got to thank him publicly because he hadn't charged anything for the last 15 years, so, you know, they did a lot of work that they were compensated for to begin with, but I just wanted to explain that and what the proposals were in the past. There is no proposal now. I think where it is now is nobody back here has a vote. You know, the votes are all up there, and it's time, you know, that the council take it over, because they're the ones that are going to vote on it and do with it what they want. I think everybody sitting back here, I know most of the people, Sage Air, I think everybody's interested in helping, you know, in doing whatever is necessary. I believe all of us thought that this meeting was going to be maybe the first of gathering facts so that you could know whether there's a feasible approach to keep an airport. I believe right now, to answer some questions, I believe right now, the airport costs the city about $5,000 a year.
I thought it was about $5,400.
Yeah, so under $6,000 a year to have an airport.
It hasn't changed, to my knowledge, so.
From, now Brad can verify that there's cities throughout the state of Illinois, throughout the United States, that are just dying to get an airport. And that's my interest, is just that, you know, we have an airport, you know, we ought to do everything we can to keep that presence, because we're right now part of an interstate transportation network, you know, by having an airport. We're on maps, you know, throughout the United States, the world, as 2Ko, you know, where you can land an airplane. But I can't tell you right now, you know, here is the plan, and what would have to happen now, because just as we did for the last 15 years, there's been six, eight different plans, now it has to be studied again. I don't think it'd be a huge undertaking, I don't think it's a, well, I don't want to speak on behalf of Brad, but he hasn't been paid anything for a long time, but I think to get the facts together, to have a, you know, some idea of what's feasible and not, you know, can be done, and, you know, you'd have to decide whether it's worth what.
Can I interject too? I should work further, or there's more complication, because the person that we leased the land in front of the airport is not interested in extending the lease anymore, and is not interested in working with us to make this happen and get the present location of the airport. So that, just the other comfort that's in the mix, that makes it even more complicated.
Yeah, and our plans, you know, the simplest thing that existed, and at that time, the landowner was interested, the simplest thing was to stay where we are. And to, I think at one time, we had a plan where, oh, we had bids from Seabrook's Range and different things, that for $200,000, $250,000, you know, that site could be, you know, modified, you know, to be an airport. Now, as I say, things change, you know, and it's been quite some time since, well, we haven't even had a meeting of this informal group for, I'm not sure, a year, nine months, something like that? And you could tell why, when you look through all the work that has been done, and now we've got, you know, what is it, February, well, February 2019, I don't know your exact date, that is the date now, because not only does the lease run out then, but the waivers, you know, run out, you know, tied to that.
Dan, you were going to say something, I think you raised your hand.
I was just going to interject that the feasibility study, the site selection study, everything that we went through, and we were creative in getting it funded, did hinge on going forward to ultimately end up at that, at that time, it was 2.5 cents on the dollar. When we were making a presentation, that was the first time that we've really saw several people come out and voice an opinion of dissatisfaction with the site location, at that time, representative for the property owners did make a statement that they would work with us at the existing airport, and henceforth, that's when this study was tabled. The end result of that is, we're in the situation that we are now in that, that did not turn out to be true, that we could resolve the differences at the existing site. So the end result is now we face this.
He did say, he gave the airport some.
Yeah, he made a public statement that he was going to work with us, and that's when it was tabled.
Yeah, there are two interesting, I thought, you know, historical articles in the packet that you have that kind of documents publicly what, you know, little benchmarks, you know, that's in your packet there. And one covers the meeting where it was tabled.
So a couple of more quick questions?
Yeah.
So based on this, then you would have to do the site selection survey again, correct?
What else I'm going to have been down on? I think what you would have to do is at least define, you know, what you want in a minimum facility, and maybe, the best term is not plan, but there are some concepts. That's about all they are, and so from that, there are actually two or three options that I think are in play, but a couple of them are contingent upon a willing landowner to be able to work with. Yeah, it would be basically defining what size of facility you'd want, if it's just maintaining the existing facility, or if you wanted to do something else, and then if you would desire to pursue either state or federal funding, there's all different kinds of requirements for how those would play in versus just funding an improvement yourself.
One other quick question.
Sure.
Could you explain, for those of us that are not familiar with all of the terms?
Sure.
Sort of, as it relates to the current uses of the airport, what the differences would be between the public access airport and the restricted landing, whatever that term was, restricted landing space?
Yeah, so, and actually, I could probably lend to some of the aircraft owners behind me to better explain it, but my understanding overall is, once it goes to a restricted landing area, the insurance changes for how individual aircraft owners could operate into there, and so it would honestly kind of discourage them from being in there, they have to have prior approval to be able to fly in there. When you're a public use airport, there is a, you know, a designation that goes with that, the state stamps on it, that gives you certain rights to be able to, if you became a restricted landing area, Parkland College would not, I'm assuming, I'm not speaking on their behalf, but they would not operate there. I don't know about Line Night Lighter Club, if they could or would, or individual aircraft owners. So that's really the biggest distinction, I don't know if anybody else can.
Well, the only thing that I'd add is that we're not, the city's probably not, airport wise, not as worried about that as the. wise, not as worried about that as the, drop dead date, you know, because the lease about, you know, restricted landing, you know, is something that if, if it didn't fix the hill, well, the, everything's, everything's over in February 2019 anyway. I might, I might just take the moment and then I'll be quiet again, summarizing where I think it is, you know, in my opinion, and anybody here, you know, I'm inviting, you know, pipe in, is that they're in the plan right now, but it is something that if the city doesn't want to just stand by and let it close and do something, then I think it's something that you start again with, Callie's a professional here in that regard, you know, it's economic development, and she probably has a lot of the contacts already, you know, and we've made the contacts with IDOT, the Illinois Division of Aeronautics, you know, lots of other, we've got Brad, and working together the facts for the council with Terry, you know, to where it's like any other, you know, infrastructure of the city that is taken over by the city staff, we did what we could, you know, as a group and, and I'd be happy to spend any amount of time out, you know, helping out. I don't fly anymore, I don't keep an airplane there, I don't have probably any more interest now than you do, just as, you know, city infrastructure, an important item, but I'd be happy to help and I'm sure, you know, the people here would be happy to help, it's just that it really is a city, gotta be city driven now, you know, to, if the airport's going to continue past that February date, it'll be because the city and, you know, and I, I'm sorry, okay, I think probably due to your work, you know, coming up with a plan.
Joe?
Now, you mentioned the county earlier, are they involved in this at all? Were they involved in asking about funding or anything in the past?
Yeah, so the, one of the requirements that IDOT said was if you're gonna pursue a replacement airport or whatever solution it is, you need to have a sponsor. And because Sage Air is basically the leasing of the airport right now. And so the city at that time voted to become the official sponsor of the replacement airport in whatever form that takes. So, the county, I, I don't know what other communications have occurred, but my involvement has really just been with the city.
Council, county board, former county board people here.
I don't know if that was ever discussed there.
It was discussed, but the, the feeling on the county board at that point was that this airport was here in Monticello and they didn't see that as a big asset to a B man or a server board or the other parts of the county, and so it was a little hard to get excited about putting your name on it so that you were a county airport. But the county has every year dominated toward the operation of the airport. It's usually about about 2,000 dollars, so.
Danny?
That, that said, one of the big operations each year at the airport is the application of property handsome products by ag operators. And we have always let any ag operator come in there that wanted to apply. Without this public access, your ag operators would have to commute further and so consequently the impact to some of the central county farmers especially would naturally be higher cost. But the airport is very much part of the, the ag community as well as the hobby pilots, the JR Aeroto that comes out and does the big glider event, brings people from all over the world to Monticello. It's multiple aspects, it's not just any one aspect. And most airports, the number one argument which we heard during this process is it's just a very few rich people and it's very much not that case. It's a very much an educational tool as well, local scouting groups, cabinet involved as well as scouting groups from other parts of the state that are coming in for programs. There's just multiple aspects of it.
How many pilots do we have live in the city limits?
I can't answer that.
I am bridge just out.
You mean here?
There are, there are other pilots that are.
At here, at the meeting, or are you, you mean how many?
No, I did pilots that are.
There's quite a lot.
That are within the city limits.
Yes, quite a lot.
And they have their planes out there?
No.
Now you're changing.
No, I'm asking you a question.
That's a good question.
Yes.
I, I don't think anybody's compiled the, the information you want, I don't think there's not a local, you know, pilots club or, you know, or anything like that.
Quite frankly, some of our aircraft owners that are local to this community are flying aircraft that need to be based at a hard surface runway for insurance purposes, that do fly in and out here and buy fuel sometimes, but they need to be based at a hard surface. Our local airport, as it, as it is, is an exit ramp basically off of the transportation system, but it's basically a dirt road exit ramp. And so we do have pilots and pilots that fly, some of them fly professionally, that, that would fly aircraft that cannot use this airport in existence today.
And you talked about earlier the number of takeoffs and landings from the previous study, but now the U of I school is gone at Silver Parkland, and I'm sure it's not as big if it wasn't U of I.
Right.
Do we still meet the criteria?
I've not looked into that to know, I don't know how many base aircraft are at the airport right now, so that would be, have to be part of, that's part of the reassessment.
Yeah. I just wondered if you were interested in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jim?
Larry, CAC members, Jim Reed, and I'm a, used to live in rural Monticello, now rural Glan, I was one of the people that was highly involved with the group that opposed the previous plan and study. And when, when Johnny got ready to form this ad hoc committee, he came and asked me if I would serve on it and, and be a part of that discussion. And I agreed to that because I think even though we opposed that original plan and, and the way it was structured and the size and scope, everyone on that group, I think, recognized that the current airport is serving the needs of the community and if the community wants to keep that presence and that scale and that size as what currently exists, that, that should be something worth trying to work towards. So I joined the committee and have worked with it for the last, you know, however many years, decade or so we've been doing this. And we, you know, as one of the couple of the first things we got into was it kind of seemed like the original plan that was presented to the council was the grand plan, the big plan, as big as we could make, blow it up. And so one of our, our key objectives from the beginning and really part of what also brought the Farm Bureau on board, was what can we do as a minimal plan? What do we have to have to, to meet all the needs and, and, you know, keep it involved within the community? So that's, you know, when Brad came up with these other concepts of instead of like a, you know, 1,200 acre project that we saw the first time, maybe 160. And so with that in mind, you know, we, we continue to have that dialogue and try to scout locations you'll see in the packet you have, even some initial, you know, contacts and discussions with some landowners and some neighbors. But as a committee, I mean, we, you know, we couldn't go out and say, hey, would you be willing to sell ground to the city to do an airport because we obviously didn't have any authority or money? So, you know, we, we couldn't really engage in the depth of that discussion that once the city picks it up, if that's the direction you go, you can have. We did have numerous discussions with the current, with the representative of the family that owns the current location and, you know, there, there was always a good dialogue, a good exchange of information, that they had their, their position and, and, you know, we had ours and, and we never quite meshed up on that at that time. But as in any negotiation process, the closer you get to the end, you know, sometimes people's opinions change, sometimes those, those discussions should be revisited. Ed, Larry, when you said a while ago, you know, that that was not maybe an option, you know, that wasn't an option that existed for our committee, but maybe with the council, if you decide to go that direction and revisit this issue formally, you know, I would encourage you to approach them and have that discussion or try to have that dialogue, you know, rather than, than going off in a different direction first. Because I, you know, they're family, it's always been committed to the community, they, they've always felt connected and tried to do what's best for the community and, you know, as we get closer to that, that deadline, maybe their feelings or maybe their, you know, indications will change. So, you know, that'd be one possibility, but, you know, as someone that, that was really opposed to the first plan and, you know, I think there's some justification in our group for the feelings we had, but we still recognize that being a part of this transportation system is important. It's important that Monticello have that on the map, that we have an airport, there is that opportunity to come here, fly here, engage here, there's certainly some economic benefit to the community who have it. And, and even those that oppose the original plan recognize that and, and know that it's a discussion to be, you know, continues to be worthy of the council's time and attention to continue that discussion.
Thank you.
Dick?
Dick, one thing I would say, Jim was kind of sent to talk to the current owner, I don't think that you can proceed as a leaser. It, it's gonna have to be a city owned to be, go for it and get the grants and get the money that we need because they will not give that money, any money, to an airport that is not owned by a nestor.
I think, Brad, isn't it true that if you have a long-term lease?
We, we had, it is not typical that that happens, I, but I think there, there are some avenues that could be explored. Technically, the grant assurances for federal money in a development item are 20 years and then after that they expire. So, you know, it, I, I would not say either way it, it has to be an IDOT decision, but I think it is something that it would be on the table.
It seems like at one time, because this is 15 years, so at one time we were pursuing a long-term lease and that we would qualify for various things that were available at the time.
Yeah, it's, it's not, non-traditional enough that I wouldn't want to say.
But ideally, you know, what Dick is saying is absolute truth. Now, is the, is that we qualified for what he was referring to as the NIPIS. That was, in my cred, that's an automatic 150,000 a year for your airport improvements?
And what, once the facility is constructed.
And, and we were, we qualified for that, in fact, we got a check that we had to endorse back over for 150,000, so that's another thing to keep in mind. And, and what we're really doing, besides taking too much of your time, is just telling you, there's a lot of these questions that, you know, that I think are capable of, you know, getting answers to that maybe could keep us from losing, you know, the city losing an airport, you know, if we get answers to all these questions and come up with something that's really feasible.
Joe? What, what is the rationale for the current owners of the, of the property? Why won't they extend the lease?
We do not know and we don't, and it was a change of heart, as you read in the newspaper article, it's documented here, the change of heart and we don't know, don't know why. And I haven't talked to, you know, myself because there's others that have. And I, I, I think that, you know, that that again would be, you know, very appropriate for Callie, Terry, Mayor, you know, to revisit, you know, with them.
Or maybe Jim knows. Jim, have they, have they talked to you?
Yeah, I mean, so we haven't talked for, for a few years.
Like it goes, like the conversation goes on and on and on.
I think part of the, part of the, the issue is, is, you know, as in all families, you get newer generations coming up and their understanding of what's there, what's not there may be a little different than the preceding generation's kind of legacy situation. So, you know, awareness of the, the, the original intent of the family to make that an airport and make that available for an airport for the community, for the better of the community, just maybe something that's kind of waned over time. You know, I don't know, I personally do not know if they've ever been asked if they would extend the current lease formally by the city. The initial objection was to the relocation and rearrangement of dirt to take the hill sightline issue out of the discussion. And they have great concerns based on the drainage to their property if that were to happen and how it would affect all the other farm ground they have that surrounds the airport. But again, as a, as an informal committee, you know, we can't make commitments and couldn't really maybe address what might be spent to, to satisfy those concerns if you move forward. But again, I can't say, and we, you know, our scope of our discussion, we weren't really asking about lease extensions. I think some of it may be to what Dick referred to, that, you know, to really qualify for the NIPIS, it, it probably the cleaner route was not to lease, but for the city to own. So I don't know about that.
I just, the feeling that I'm getting listening to all of this is that it appears that the city is going to be in a position to have to buy some land, doesn't it?
Well, well, that, I'm not sure if that's the case.
Well, I don't know if we can, if we can't continue to lease or.
Yeah.
It just keeps going back to the buy the land.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I can't answer the question as to whether or not the city would have, you know, the ability or luck or whatever it would be to talk them into spending, you know, the lease. It's hard, hard to say, but there isn't, again, repeating myself, there isn't really a resolution here, you know, being presented, you know, just kind of giving you a flavor for what all's happened. But over the years, you know, at one time the landowner had agreed to trade his land and we had a landowner less, well, about a mile away who was selling the land to, had agreed to sell the land to the city and then trade the current airport, you know, for the farm ground, that's much better farm ground. And so as time went on, that didn't happen, they changed their mind. And then we had two or three other sites where the landowners had agreed that they would sell their land, like for example, behind the houses out on Airport Road, that landowner had agreed to sell that, you know, and, you know, for an airport. So there's lots of things that, that, I'm just throwing these out in that could come out of the study, other possibilities. At one time I thought I had an individual who is rather substantial, who was going to put up a sizable amount, maybe in the area of a million dollars, you know, so I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but, you know, there's, there's reasons why I think before we just let it, you know, go, you know, to try to recreate and come up with some, make sure that there's not some other remedy, you know, so that we can, we can stay in the, as I like to repeat over and over, part of the interstate transportation network.
Well, it makes sense, I can tell you that all the people I talked to in town say, tell me that the airport is used by very few select people, that it is not widely used.
Yeah.
And, and I also heard you guys talking about that it is used more than, than I might know or the community might know, which is a public relations challenge.
Well, I think that's, again, I'm talking too much to Brad, you know, correct me if I owe.
Here's what, here's what I finally came down to. What is the current usage as we see in the current location, take offs and landings? And what is the protected use?
Well, the, the usage right now is a page, I don't know which page, I'm missing my number, but it's, it's in the book and I don't, I don't know, I grabbed my book and looked, but, you know, and then the usage in the, you know, what you're saying.
You know what I mean, don't you?
Yeah, what you're saying is, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's true in the entire United States. I don't care whether it's O'Hare Airport. the entire United States, I don't care whether it's O'Hare Airport or where, you know, the general community, community doesn't get in and get behind the airport, that's the nature of airports. I doubt that you could raise the money to get an exit off of Interstate seventy-two if you went on the basis of, uh, you know, just a popular vote, then say, what's the matter, Ridge Road, you know, and, and so I think, uh, that's the nature of infrastructure, you know, and some of them probably say that about a sewage treatment plant, you know, but they, uh-
Oh, no, 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 one's, one's-
Yeah, one's a toilet.
One's dead of port.
But, uh, you know, there's some, there's some streets that, you know, you know, you'd say, well, they're not used by everybody and so, but, uh, just being a part of the network is what I'm saying, and, uh, and, and again, it's hard, uh, I gotta remind myself, you know, I don't fly anymore, you know, and I don't really have a, a, a real stake, I just hate to see the city lose something that everybody else would love to have.
So, the figures in the book, is that before or after the U of I closed, they're airported?
Fred, Fred put that together, is that, uh-
Let me see.
I think it's that here.
And Parkland College, like.
Parkland College took over the program, they still are instructing, uh, we still see the airplanes out there, it's probably not the traffic that the U of I had, the U of I traffic numbers were, um, to the right, by, or something like that.
Yeah, I haven't seen those orange planes in the air in years.
Um, you haven't seen them? No, I'm sorry.
They're there.
Uh, they're there.
They're there.
Maybe, I just haven't seen them. Did, when you said the hundred and fifty thousand for the op, for the maintenance, now is that for operation and maintenance? Can that be used for operation, or is that just for maintenance?
Again, uh, I'm not the expert, but the NIPUS hundred and fifty thousand automatic check every year is for airport improvement, lighting, fences, uh, runway, uh, have I overstated?
Now, the, the, the condition though that has to exist to use that is that the facility has to be, you have to have a plan that's gonna meet federal standards, and so there's, you know, the airport right now, the, what, what started this whole-
Yeah, I understand.
-thing is, was just meeting state standards, and, uh, to meet federal standards, it would be much more than just simply, uh, regrading profile or runway.
Right.
I, I'm encouraged by what I'm hearing, the discussion's been good, but I'm looking at the clock, and I think, you know, we, I, this is not a one, one-time shot, I would really like to, uh, is the interest here to continue, continue this study for a while longer and see if we can come up with something. Everybody, everybody if you have not looked through this book, please look through the book. Steve?
Um, as I recall, the last time that this issue was discussed in front of the city council, it was a presentation by John Hyder. Now, I don't know if he represented your group, or what, but I thought he did, and his proposal, by far, sounded like the most reasonable and sensible proposal, um, and maybe it was just the way he presented it, but that, that had been spoken of in this room, and I'm thinking that may be the last proposal that was discussed with the city council in the city, was the last one brought forth by your group, and I'm sorry that John's not here tonight to reiterate the things that he had brought forward, but I, for one, was, uh, was very impressed with the presentation and, and hope that that is, is still the thought, that was nine years ago, um, but I don't know that things have changed much since then.
So, um, are we, want, wanting to get back together again? John, you got something to say?
Well, I just, I just had a question, uh, is it, uh, at this point, uh, you wanna get together and talk again, is it appropriate then that, uh, you know, with our file, we get together with your staff?
Always do.
And, uh, discuss it, uh, and then anybody else council-wise that wants to be involved, so that, so that we can, uh, you know, help to whatever extent that we're able and, uh, make their job easier?
Yeah, that's great.
Bill?
All right, I want to suggest with your consideration as a group, that as Parkland was asking that, how much use, et cetera, that's a factor at this point, but I think we need to keep in our head, thinking forward, the value of a hard surface runway, and the amount of increase that we will get, increased usage, we would get from a hard surface runway.
You know, I was thinking from a, from an economic development standpoint, it might not bring in a lot of visitors, it might not bring in a lot of, uh, cost of investment money in town, but it would provide a place for a small businessman who might set up in Monticello, uh, an executive kind of an airport, so that they would not have to drive champagne, and it might be a plus and package that we would use to woo people, so that, that, an indirect economic development in a strong way.
I think that's an enticement for people to move to our community down the road.
The original feasibility study, one thing I didn't point out was the city's role, which was in-kind labor, really went into the, uh, surveying and holding the, the community, and in the back of the study is a stack of letters, probably that thick, of, of different businesses and individuals that, uh, were supportive of the airport at that time, so, um, you know, again, that, that may be a, a step to, to assess what, you know, that you want to take there, so.
I know you're adjourning, but the final thing I'd like to do is, is thank Brad for all the effort that he's, uh, put into this, just, uh, you know, uh, because he's interested in Monticello, you know, so Brad thanks.
So, on that note, I will, I will, um, get back with Mr. Corley and try to set something up for him in the future, not too far out, we need to, we need to get off topic, but we do need to have resolution to this, and we need to have it in, in, a fair amount of time, reasonable amount of time, so with that, I-
The next time, excuse me, the next time we meet, can we get the answer to short questions that we asked tonight?
Sure, it should be.
As well as, can we get somebody from the county here to talk about this, I mean, we're talking-
Sure.
They're talking about processing, that's for the county, they, the city doesn't own the farm land, so.
Yeah, my, my one kind of, uh, final comment would be to the council that, um, it takes a long time to go through and do the planning and the, you know, there, if there's gonna be state or federal money in, in whatever the solution is, um, that's gonna require some level of property interest, whether it be an extended lease or, or whatever, um, and two, you know, about a year and a half from now, or a little, little less than two years is, is the deadline we're on, so I'm not trying to pressure anybody, but, uh, there is, uh, these things just take a long time, depending upon what the solution is, if it's, uh, you can work out something with the property owner and it's, uh, fairly simple and, and feel comfortable.
Thank you. I'll continue to work with John, I'll provide the comments this evening, thank you very much, is there a motion for adjournment?
So, who?
Is there a second?
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.